February tenth, two thousand fourteen, in the administration building, boardroom, lower level. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Geroz?
Excused.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. For the consent agenda, the check register is in the front for examination. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries six zero. We'll move on to the human resources portion for our action items. Mr. Croner, will you please read the motion on the school calendar?
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school calendar, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there any Board discussion or comment? Any community comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries six zero. The next item is the superintendent's action item regarding bylaw zero one five zero revision. Mrs. Milfeld, please read the motion.
Thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve the revisions to bylaws zero one five zero organization regarding ballots and the nomination procedures, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Just to provide an introduction to this, this was proposed by the Board President as a housekeeping item where experience had shown we had either a disagreement or something vague or awkward about our election procedure. I tried to reduce the wording from the proposal of the discussion in the previous meeting. Fundamentally, I tried to set it down to two changes, that there be a abstention option explicitly on the ballot, because Dr. Erdl, while collecting the ballots, has received a blank piece of paper, and it's probably helpful for him to know for sure that it wasn't an accidental blank paper versus somebody's abstention. The other item had to do with the reading of the vote count on the nominations. We had a little bit of a debate in the organizational meeting last year, and to the extent there's any continuing disagreement on the outcome of that, to put that decision into the bylaw would remove it from the Chair's discretion with regards to what to do there, or remove it from disagreement at least. So with that, is there any Board discussion or comment with respect to this? Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you. Yes, I was unable to attend the last meeting, and so I wasn't able to leave comments at that time. But I would like to make a motion to amend the policy, and I'll hand that out to Board members so they can have a written copy. And the portions, the short paragraph for nomination reads, "Each member shall receive one ballot for the purpose of nominating an officer." There's a new added sentence, "There is no provision for the absentee ballots." And then the secretary will collect the ballots and identify the nominees, and my addition is, "The total votes received by each nominee will not be read." And so, in effect, this would reverse what is trying to be done in this policy, so that when we have nominations, superintendent would simply look at the slips, and if someone was nominated three times, they'd just say their name once, so-and-so was nominated, without giving the total count.
Now, Mr. Croner, just to be clear on your motion, is the language for the abstention, does that remain?
Yes, I'm only changing, adding a sentence to the nomination paragraph.
Okay, so your motion would keep with the proposed change to have the abstention option on the ballot, but would change from the proposal, your amendment would have no reading of the count on the nomination, and the original motion would have reading of the count on the nomination, and that's the difference?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Is there any discussion?
May I go ahead?
Yes, please.
One reason I'm doing it this way is that I don't want to vote the entire motion down, because I think adding some of the other things that are added to the policy will be helpful. There's a couple of reasons I wanted to do this. From a practical perspective, I really don't think it's useful to read all the votes for the nominations, because what we have been doing is reading the votes for the nomination, and someone might get nominated five times and someone else nominated two times, and then the announcement would be for the election for those two people, and then the vote comes out five to two. So it seems like we were having two votes when we really should only have one. And I think knowing the number of nominations ahead of time probably does influence the way some people vote. So I think it would be a cleaner Board election if we just say who was nominated and then have the election after that. And the second reason I'm doing this is more based on precedent. In the meeting last spring where we elected Board Officers, the nominations, the number of nominations that people received for President was read, and then I brought up a point of order saying that I thought we had agreed to not read these, and that was, I guess, perceived as, it brought on some confusion in the Board. But what I'd like to present to the Board tonight is that in the Board packet that we received for that meeting, we received procedures for the election of officers, which the Board receives every year. And I highlighted for the Board two sentences that under, in the paragraph, "First vote is nomination for President. Read the names and ballots." And then the two sentences I highlighted were, "Only state the name of the person nominated once," and "Once" is all capitals, and then the second sentence is, "If the same person receives a second or third nomination, do not state the name again." So, to me, this has indicated that we had at one point decided how we should run the election, and I think we should stick with this, and Mrs. Galante was checking some old files, and this is the way it had been written and presented to the Board for, I think, since two thousand eight. So I think it would be helpful for the Board to keep it this way, because I think it's the best way to run the election. And obviously, it's, the Board could decide to change that this precedent doesn't obligate them to vote a certain way, but I think it offers weight to the idea that the Board did decide to accept nominations but not read the vote count. And that has been, we may not have followed it that way all of the time, but that was supposed to be the standard practice.
Is there any other comment? I will add a comment. Either way, I would urge that no one vote no on the amendment, and, well, how do I say this? As President, my last, my term ends this year, my last action that I will preside over will be this election, and whatever this is, I would like it taken out of the discretion of the Chair. If, under Robert's Rules of Order, if there's a call for a division of the House, the count will have to be read. And the Chair could do that on their own, or someone else could call for that. So I just want it decided. So with that...
Mr. Meyer?
Yes?
Could I comment on that? What is confusing then a little bit is that we have this document, Procedures for the Election of Officers, and it's not part of the policy, but it's been the operating procedure for the Board for quite a few years. So we might at some point consider having maybe administrative procedures added to our policies, so that this is not something that exists outside of the policies, but it's just a procedure that goes with the policy.
That they be in alignment. And with the Board's statement tonight, I'm sure they will be placed in alignment. So with that, is there any other Board discussion? Is there any community comment on the amendment? Mrs. Galante, please call the roll on the amendment.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
No.
Mrs. Randall?
No.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No. Three, three.
No.
The motion fails without a majority. So we'll go to the main amendment, or the main motion. Is there any Board comment? Is there any community comment? All right, with that, if the motion carries, it's decided. If the motion fails, I will not bring this to the Board again during this term. With that said, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
No.
Mr. Croner?
No.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, three, three. The motion fails. With that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Human Resources proposal on the Career Ladder Handbook. Dr. Erdl and Mr. Mack, please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. First of all, I'd like to recognize someone who isn't here this evening who did a lot of work on this project, Dan Chanan, the recently departed HR director. That doesn't sound so good. Dan, who recently left us, but Dan did a lot of work and was crucial in the development of this proposal. Tonight, we're going to share what is the culmination of many months of work by a lot of people through a lot of different sessions, a lot of feedback that took place, and hopefully be able to share and represent the result of that work of the committee that we have. The Compensation Committee members, you can see them listed here. I'd ask that our committee members that are here this evening, if they would just raise their hand, and the Board can recognize who you are, but it was a pretty committed group of people that spent a lot of time and a lot of consternation working through this proposal. I think it was well represented by veteran teachers, newer teachers, administration principals, and central office administration as well. The process that we went through, we started out with listening sessions at Verisite, sponsored last summer. We had four different listening sessions, and there was a facilitated idea generation session with the people from Verisite, and really looked at what do people want in the compensation system, and there was a number of...
Is that too much?
There?
Yeah, no. Is that okay? Can't you see it? Is that okay for you?
That's fine. And we had the generations session with Verisite, and came up with a number of key components that I think do fit within our model that we came up with. We constructed the model in the third step, and then we did financial modeling. The financial modeling continues. It's something that we continue to operate, and John continues to work on, and is all a big part of the process as well. We presented to the Board and to the staff on several different occasions. We had a lot of feedback at the meetings, and the result of that feedback, I think you'll see tonight in a couple of different areas, that we've changed. I think this whole process has morphed into something that, of what we're bringing back to this evening, it changed quite a bit from our initial plan and where we went, and really it was a result of the feedback from the School Board, from teachers, and the committee as well. We're at the revision refinement stage, and the recommendation to the School Board, and then implementation would be following, obviously, the Board adoption of this plan. One of the goals of the committee was to create a structure that helped us to attract and retain the best staff. It's really what it comes down to when you look at a compensation plan. We want to make sure that not only can we hire, but we retain the best. And it needed to achieve the goals, designate movement on evaluation and participation, provide a competitive salary at each step in the career path, value both education and experience. Those were a number of things that came out in the Verisite sessions that were key points. Be attainable. There shouldn't be a prize at the end no one ever reaches. So when you see, as we go through this, we didn't set a quota where only a certain number of people can get to a certain level, that it's something that everybody can strive for and should strive for. Clearly communicate how people move through the system, and be predictable. Recognize teacher leadership, value professional development, and be flexible to move forward and back along with responsibility without jeopardizing significant pay. And I mentioned that, and this was one of our operating principles for the committee, the teacher compensation system is designed to achieve the district's goal of recruiting and retaining highly qualified educational professionals who'd be advocates for the goals of our students and our community. So the overview of the system, we have four different levels. Level one is for initial educators, as defined by the Department of Public Instruction, people that are in their first through fifth year under that educator license, which is under the new licensure system, and they will maintain and stay on that level approximately five years. Level two is professional educators by license, and they continue to meet performance expectations. I think a couple of important points as I walk through this. Level two is not just a performing teacher, it's high expectations for level-two teachers, and they have to be performing at a very high level. Level three typically, six years of service within level two before they move to level three, and I think it's important that the word typically is in there, because, again, if we're trying to hire and retain our best teachers, when we make a determination that someone is performing at a level, they need to be able to move through the system at a faster speed as well. A master's degree, national board certification, or master educator license, and evidence of consistent and sustained contribution through assumption of leadership roles in the district building, or exemplary teaching performance. I think to point out that what was brought back to the committee from the Board meeting and from several feedback sessions is, we know we have great teachers that don't have a master's degree, don't have national board certification, and don't have a master educator license. And one of the points that I make often is, it's not about certifications, it's about qualifications, and I think that's important that we have that in here as well, and recognize we have incredible teachers that are performing at a high level that should be recognized for that, and just because they don't have a master's degree, that they shouldn't be held back because of that. A lot of people have made different decisions over time. Generally speaking, to get to level three in a predetermined is to get the master's degree or the national board certification. So there's a balance, but there's also that exception. We want people to attain the higher educational levels, because we think that's important as an educational institution, to have lifelong learners that are working here, but also we don't want to hold back those that are not or have not pursued that educational level. And level four is for employees whose current salary is above the level-two maximum and who are not placed at, placed at level three, then they're moved to level four. So currently, we're looking at forty-two for level two. Forty to sixty thousand, level three is forty-two to eighty-five-three. We don't have anybody listed at eighty-five-three quite yet, but, and it's somewhat misleading that even in level three, there is no maximum salary. In level four, there is no maximum salary. So we may say our starting wage in level one is going to be forty thousand to roughly fifty thousand. The top of those schedules, really, there is no cap, because the way we have it set up, people will continue to move through regardless of what we say is the max on there, that they'll continue to accumulate salary increases as their performance continues to maintain a high level. So each year, people will continue to move through the salary structure. I just mentioned where these are at right now. Currently, some of our professional staff members are over eighty thousand dollars. That includes some extra pay that was, for days, some of our counselors, our veteran counselors are at that level. But as we develop this model, these are the maxes, minimums and maximums that we've looked The progression, the movement within each salary class, based on overall increase authorized by the Board. While that's not a consistent number each and every year, we know that under current law, it's based on the base wage negotiation, the base wage salary increase can only go up, the CPI, and so there's going to be, whatever the result of the negotiations and whatsoever authorized by the School Board, will be put into the schedule. Relative salary placement within that classification, and overall performance evaluation. What we're recommending is that levels one and two receive the standard increase, and our recommendation for the year of fifteen, sixteen, because this placement that we're looking at right now is for the fourteen, fifteen school year, but we're looking at an increase of a thousand dollars as an increment for levels one and two. Level three would be twenty percent higher, so twelve hundred dollars, and level four would be fifty percent of the standard increase. So that would be five hundred dollars in level four. I think when you look at progression, there's increased financial incentive for people at every single level of salary. So if you're a starting teacher, there's an opportunity to move through the salary matrix and move up higher, and move over to level three in a defined number of years if you're at the highest, if you're the highest-paid teacher in the district. It's not that you're sitting at the bottom of the salary schedule anymore, it's that you have an opportunity to grow at a level higher than others in the district. If we look at the twenty percent above the standard increment, people even at the highest-paid amount of our salary, current salary structure, have that opportunity to move. The movement to level three, you can move from level two or from level four to level three, so there is movement back and forth. It's based on the assessment of the performance by the principal for sustained and consistent leadership, or for example, exemplary classroom performance. I think this piece right here is probably the biggest change to our compensation system for teachers and for professional staff in the district. Administrators, other staff members in the district have been compensated in a way that some of the groups may have had one, two, or three steps that were built into the system. Administrators were at the discretion of their evaluation and overall increase by the Board. So it is changing, but for teachers who are used to moving across the lane for increased credit attainment, and moving down for each year of experience and a successful evaluation, that there was an automatic increase built in of a certain dollar amount. That's not set up in this system. And I think it puts a lot of credibility into the evaluation system. I think the important piece that we're going to have to develop is a lot of consistency for our evaluation system, and making sure that our principals are working in concert together, that we have that consistency across the district. And we've already started that work, and we'll continue to work and improve in that area as well. But ordinarily, like I mentioned earlier, requires a master's degree, national board or master educator. It can be waived based on an assessment of exemplary teaching performance. And there's going to be an appeal process after the initial placement, once the model gets put into place for fourteen, fifteen, for teachers that are denied placement to level three. And like I mentioned earlier, there is no quota. One of the discussions we had on the committee was, what is the role of the principal in this? And we almost went, we went from where the principal is almost looked at as a gatekeeper to say, "You haven't made it to level three," versus the principal being the number-one advocate to help their teachers move to that level three, and making sure that communication takes place back and forth and on a continual basis of what teachers need to do, or professional staff need to do to move to that level three. The initial placement runs concurrently with the proposal for this model, but is somewhat separate. A couple of things that were taken into account for initial placement, current salary placement, including their masters and national board stipends, those were add-ons for people that had attained that after two thousand eleven, two thousand ten. So those are included into that component. They're years of service and years of experience, and we weighed more heavily toward years of experience in our district, and assessment of leadership contributions, and overall performance based on the rubric originally from the Danielson model, but very similar to the model from the strong system of evaluation that we are moving to ACESI six. And as I mentioned before, if the employee is above the proposed level placement, they will at least maintain their current salary and be placed at level four. Our recommendation that's going to be coming forward to the School Board is, everybody in the district will be getting an increase at a minimum of two percent, and it's going to range widely beyond that as well, but at a minimum of two percent increase, which currently at this point is well above the CPI. And the new career ladder will replace those stipends, so moving down the road, there won't be stipends. That is built into the assumptions in the model for the masters and national board As I mentioned, I think this is a huge shift, and I think we could walk through and lay out different models and different components of what the salary structure is. The biggest change is, it's a new way of moving through a salary system. It's a new way of recognizing excellence. It's not a system where, I've mentioned in the past, that all teachers are created equal. Everybody was treated identically, all professional staff. Currently, we have our guidance counselors, OTs, PTs, social workers, school sites included in this model, and I think that's something we need to look at down the road, too, and say, should that be more of a market-driven, because they are kind of a different component, although our evaluation model does take into account our student services employees as well, and looks to be a solid evaluation model and different than what we've had in the past. So it might make sense down the road to keep them included, but at this point, they are part of this process. So I think we've spent a lot of time, a lot of thought. I feel confident that this is a model that can help move Wauwatosa forward, meet the goals that we set forth in our compensation plan, and be able to hire and retain the best staff in southeastern Wisconsin. And through the financial piece, obviously being one component of it, but also a lot of other ways through communication, other means to make sure we maintain our best staff and keep them here in our district.
And Edish?
Yes.
Any questions from the Board? Mrs. Rios?
Thank you. I was happy to see that now Class Three doesn't have just the leadership component, it also has exemplary teacher, because that was one of my biggest concerns, and I really liked that that was changed. I have a couple of questions, and if other people have questions, I'll just ask one. My first question is that I realize now, when I was preparing for this and looking at the old presentation, there used, the one that was presented during the last meeting had a, it was called Level D, right, which was the one for specific positions in the district. Do you remember that one?
Yes, I do.
And, right, I mean, obviously you remember it.
Thank you.
Do you remember? Okay. So my question with that was, that was a way that, you know, your career could kind of change within the district and go from being like a classroom teacher to something else, and now that's gone, right? There's, it's not part of the levels anymore.
If you're looking at it from a graphical picture, I would say, add another box down at the bottom and put those positions, to be created positions. Part of the reason we took it out of there is, it's somewhat disingenuous to have it there when we really don't have any positions created to fill those.
Okay.
So we removed it and said, let's not say that these positions are going to be paid at such a So we removed it and said, let's not say that they're going, these positions are going to be paid at such and such. Because we don't even know what those positions are. We anticipate that we're going to need positions that are at the upper end of the teacher leadership model, educator effectiveness, and they might be doing, helping with evaluations. But I, we looked at it and said, instead of doing that, let's look at a stipend-based situation, which would be better than moving people into those kinds of positions. Because people tend to move in to those kinds of positions. And at some point, they may say, you know what, I don't want to do this anymore. Or maybe determine that they're not very effective at it. So instead of all of a sudden changing from one salary structure, salary band, salary level, and then you got to be moved back and take a significant pay cut. The idea is if you're paid on a stipend basis, for example, you're going to be position A and that's going to be a ten thousand dollar a year increase or stipend, that you know very clearly succinctly that if you choose not to do it or if you remove from it, it's that ten thousand dollar stipend that is, is moved away. And it's just a lot more clear. Plus, again, we don't have any positions to have it there. And maybe down the road, if we do have positions and we want it to be part of that level system, maybe that can happen, but at this point, it didn't make sense to keep it there without the positions.
And that makes sense, you know, if we don't have the positions, don't put them there. I, the one nice thing about that was that it could give someone the feeling that they could continue their career beyond teaching in the district. You know, to kind of focus on building future position A and position B people, like within the district. I think that was a big part of it.
Sure, and I'm confident we'll have those positions.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that it's known and that there's compensation tied to it as well that people could strive for.
Thank you.
Did you have anyone else? Let's go with Mrs. Randall for next.
Yes.
I have a couple of quick ones and probably a longer one. I thought I heard you say that everybody would get at least a two percent increase, but I'm looking at the, for a initial placement, bottom of page three. Employees whose current salary is above the level two salary maximum, but is not placed in a level three will retain his or her current salary and be placed into level four.
We wanted to make sure we communicated that it's not like a demotion to be in level four. It's just the way things sit right now in the transition. Ten years down the road, level four may be gone because of the way the system plays out. So those people are, that are moved into level four are treated the same as though they were in level two. It's just the structure of saying, we're trying to set the compensation system up, not for today, but for the future. And looking ten years down the road, we need a model that can be flexible and adapt to those type of situations. So that's why those, anybody that's in that situation gets moved to level four. But it's also a strong incentive to say, we want to be able to move people and target the dollars, to move people through the system quicker at the lower levels and to get them moved into higher salaries. Those are the people we're losing. If, if we're losing quality educators, it's the people in the seven, eight, nine, ten years and of experience here, some of those people that left, they were undercompensated. So we've addressed that kind of group of people as well in this compensation. But so the ones moving to level four, we're saying, we want you at level three. We want you performing at a level to get you to level three.
And my, I think my question is more specific to the initial placement. There will be people who will retain their current salary and not get a two percent raise.
The only ones that will not get a minimum of two percent increase will be those that are on improvement plans. They will be frozen, they will not go backward.
Okay. The evaluation system, when, when will that formally be in place for us or for our teachers?
For next school year.
Okay. So then, again, I'm going to the initial placement. That used some of the criteria that will be in that evaluation process?
Yes. We didn't specifically use the strong model because we made that shift in early January. I think it was late December to make the decision to move to that model. But it's still based out of the same, same assumptions. So when we did the initial placement, we, we ended up meeting with each principal three different times to go through salaries of every single teacher and the placement on, for initial, initial placement. And we plan to do that one more time before we roll that out any further. So it was really a lot of discussions about performance, about year, looking at years of experience in the district, looking at their pay. And for the first time, really laying out everybody's individual salary, years of experience, and making sure that there's alignment with, throughout the system. So if you can succinctly look through, list everybody from lowest salary to highest, years of service and performance level fit. So that was a big part of the initial, initial placement. I don't know if I answered your question.
And then as people move through that, the movement to level three. I know we talked about this at the last presentation, but the general description of leadership roles and that type of thing, is there going to be a specific handbook definition?
There will be, it'll be, it'll be our.
And, and when and how will that be built or created?
There's a component of leadership built into the evaluation model. So as we start the training, like I mentioned, we had two initial days. We're going to get a leadership team of teachers, administrators that are going to be working on that development. So between now and the start of next school year, it'll be pretty clear of what it takes to, what that looks like moving down the road. So if I'm in category or level two, I'm aspiring to move to level three, it's going to be made very clear what I need to do, how, and how I need to perform to get to the level three. So it's, it's going to be a development. I think this is going to be a system that's going to take two to three years to fully become institutionalized. I think any kind of pay system that you put into place takes that long unless it's very clear and said, if you're working one year, you get this amount. I think another component that I'm just going to put out there when we're talking about that, that piece, financially, we're not in a situation where we're able to put a system and say exactly, you're going to move the old system where there was a step built in. And you could monitor it because the QEO was there along with revenue limits. All those components still moved us backward financially, but there was that, that degree of predictability that's, we're not able to have anymore. There is no state law on revenue limits. And at any point in time, if the budget's not good from the state level, there could be a zero percent increase on the revenue limits. For, since nineteen ninety-three up until a couple of years ago, there was a state law saying the revenue limits will increase by a certain dollar amount per member. So there was always something you can count on. At this point, the flexibility that we talked about within the system needs to be there to allow the organization to be able to adapt to those changing environments and changing scenarios that come down from the state level or decisions that the school board chooses to make. So there is that flexibility built in. And you can maintain the integrity of, of the schedule as well by not going full increments or you can increase if there's a year that, that we're moving in a positive direction or we see that our, our neighbors are doing something different to hire and retain the best. There's flexibility built into the system that allows the school board to make those kinds of decisions.
Okay. I, I do think this is going to be a really good thing. I think it's, it's going to present great opportunities for individual employees and for the district. I just want to really make sure we get off on the right foot. And so I think my questions were kind of going to initial placement. Is that as clearly defined as the movement between levels? Particularly in light of the fact that the initial placement can't be contested.
Is it clear cut? No, nothing's clear, I mean, nothing can, there's a subjective nature to education. It's a human resource business and there's a subjective nature that is going to be infused into this system and every system probably in the state unless they continue with the model they've had in the past. And that's, that's a big change. And we've got to figure out what that's going to look like. And we got to create as much consistency within that subjective piece. I, I think it's important to point that out. Even though our evaluation model, we're going to have more objectivity than we've ever had before for evaluation, more consistency than we've ever had before. There's going to be a clear requirement. And stakes are raised for our building principals and for myself and other administrators to make sure that we have that consistency. And there's going to be, this is going to be difficult. These conversations with our individual employees to say, here's where you're being placed. Those are going to be difficult conversations. But we are going to make sure that when those conversations take place, that the principals and the employees have a solid base to operate off, off of, for that understanding. And while people may not agree with the placement, they'll have a clear indication of what they need to do to move to a different classification, a different level if they, they desire.
Well, last I'll say on that is I'm glad to see that years of experience and level of education is built into that initial placement. So that at least, I think is a, a good fair, fair measure for getting started.
Mrs. Vee.
Thank you. My main question has already been asked and answered. It was about the level D last time. But I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to all the committee members and also to the teachers who came to the listening sessions. I know the committee members have spent a lot of time and invested a lot into this process. And so I for one really appreciate it. I think I speak for the board as a whole, but I wouldn't want to presume to do that. And also to the teachers who came and gave feedback. It's very important to get as much input as possible. So thanks to all of you. I did want, something you just said raised another question in my head, which was having those conversations. When do you anticipate that those teachers would be notified of where they were placed on this new program?
Well, we would, once the board would approve this, we would have an initial meeting with all of our principals again. And then shortly after that, they would begin setting up meetings. Originally with the snow day, cold day, whatever it was, and the board meeting being canceled. The idea was to have it completed by the end of February. It looks like that's going to be moved back at least two weeks. So hopefully by mid-March or maybe to give principals additional time before, when spring break, April. Shortly after, we'll begin the process after board approval.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment on timeline too. The reason that we, way that Glenn started that timeline to try to get to that point was because of the hiring season getting underway. And we want to make sure that, that people that may be considering different positions are looking to leave for financial reasons, that they see what they're going to be making next year before they make that decision. Because there are some significant increases in there for some people.
Mr. Crowder, please.
Thank you. I also want to thank everyone that worked on this. It means a lot to me to see the, the collaboration that went into this. I mean, I know if this plan may not be everything to everybody, but I think with the collaboration that went into it, it's going to meet the needs of a lot of people. And I know sometimes things get adversarial, but we're all after the same thing in the district. And I hope, I think this pushes us in that direction. Which leads me to my first question. One thing that struck me as I was reading through this, I never saw the word student learning. Now, I'm going to throw some words at you that are from the plan that I think indicates student learning. So I'm curious as to how we're going to measure actual effectiveness of the teachers. So I know you mentioned provided meaningful learning experiences. You also talk about strategies, resources and data to meet the needs of all students and effectively engages students in learning, using a variety of instructional strategies as things teachers need to do to be successful. Do those phrases, is that what you mean? Do those indicate student learning? Are you going to measure student learning? Is that part of the evaluation and promotion process?
Yes, the key words in here, anywhere you see evaluation, evaluation model, that's all about student learning, the six domains of, of the evaluation model. And we'll be doing a presentation for the board on that in, in the near future. So you can get a solid understanding of what that means and how student learning plays into this. This is clearly tied into evaluation, but we're not concentrating and focusing on that aspect of it in this presentation. But our evaluation model is all about student learning and very clearly directed that way. So it plays in. So anytime you see.
Okay.
Evaluation model, think student learning. Because that's really what our evaluation.
Because I know evaluating student learning as far as, as far as how well teachers are doing is controversial and a difficult thing to measure. But if, so that's something you'll bring forward to discuss in more detail, that's good. The other questions I have is about moving between the levels. I know that, you know, there's, there's a jump going from two to three and that's considered, you know, to, to be a measure of excellence. What about moving from one to two? I assume that if we're going to try to raise the standards, raise average salaries with the ultimate goal of increasing student learning, is moving from one to two going to be kind of a gate step? Where we're going to, people that don't ever get to two are not going to be in the district or they're going to be in special programs to get to two? Or there seems that at some point, you know, we want, if we want the best and the brightest, at some point, we're going to have to make a decision about that. And is one to two that place?
Yes, that's one of them. If they don't move to two, they're not with us anymore after five years. If they haven't made that move and they haven't moved in a professional educator for the life, we're not going to hang on. That's part of a licensure piece as well. But if, if they haven't provided us enough of a snapshot that they're going to move to, to be a level three person at some point, then we're going to encourage them to look elsewhere. I, I mean, yes.
Okay, good. And the last thing I had was had to do with the appeal process. Employees, I think in many cases, could go through the administrative chain and through you in an appeal and eventually appeal to the board as a last resort. But I don't see that in this plan. Is, is coming to the board still a possibility for appeal? Or is, are we going to, will we change other policies to make these placements outside of that process?
As a school board, you can make any decision that you would like to have. I mean, that's your prerogative. We have not clearly defined the appeal process. That's going to be, I told the committee, their work is never done even after board approval. So that's a piece that we're going to really look at. It hasn't been completely, we've had a lot of different discussions about what that appeal can look like from a panel to administrators to one person. So it hasn't been completely, we haven't laid that out yet.
Well, the appeal process in here seems to be pretty clear to me, but I wasn't sure if someone was unhappy with the appeal committee, if they could still come to the board or not. Do we still have to?
That hasn't been completely laid out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Muft, please.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the members of the committee that are here this evening and also a lot of our educators I see and community members in the audience. And I look forward to hearing you in a little bit, I hope. One thing that I was wondering, as you went through the process, was there a reality from getting to, you know, start? And there's not a finish, I understand that. But was this a real, say, a case study that people could, you know, talk about, well, this is where I am, this is what I want to do with the district, what I want to do on behalf of the students? And could they see themselves moving through this compensation career path?
I guess you might want to ask some of the committee members that, I'll put them on the spot. If there's any committee members that have.
And I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
I mean, I can't answer that. Do I think so? Sure, but they're the ones that are sitting there working through in their mind whether they, I'm sure they all kind of see themselves. Everybody, you, you tend to look at something like this, any compensation system, and you place yourself in it and say, where am I at? What do I need to do? And, you know, sometimes we have a different view of ourselves than others may. But, you know, I think everybody kind of looks at it and says, how do I move through this? And I think ultimately, when you have a committee working on something like this, if they couldn't see it in a positive light, they probably wouldn't have supported it. So I think, I guess I'm speaking for them and make them speak for themselves.
Well, and obviously, this is not something, I, I just hope that during our discussion this evening, I could hear that from members of the audience, that that's important to me.
I would like to just throw it out to the committee members. If any of the committee members have anything they would like to share, whether it's about the model, the process, whatever it would be.
All right.
I'm Kelly Hutzel, I'm an English teacher at West and.
Are you a member of the committee?
I am.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll take statements from members of the committee because Dr. Earl invited them up. Other public comment will have to wait till after the formal presentation, just so we lay the ground rules here. Okay, please go ahead.
In regards to what you said, if we could see ourselves like actually living through this, the case study, I think the one thing that was really refreshing among people in the committee that if you were committed to your job, doing your job well and wanted to continually do better, that you would be compensated for that. And I think that's something that. And I think that's something that, you know, wasn't necessarily established in the district before, so that now, if you are doing a good job, are striving to always do better, that it's nothing to fear. It actually is very motivating and not deterring in any way.
I'm Amy Whitman. I was also a committee member, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about the process. I was a little disappointed and disheartened by the first career ladder we brought up, especially when the salaries got put in. But I went to the listening sessions and helped facilitate some of the small groups, and I truly felt that the district listened to and then responded to the concerns that the employees expressed. And we met again and we got together, and I agree 100 percent, you can't just base good teaching on leadership. It has to be, are you a good teacher? That's what it really ultimately comes down to. And I feel that's become a big component. I personally like the idea of you see if I do a good job and I get a raise. That's, that's how the world works. It hasn't been how education has worked. So I really like the present plan, because I think it's dedicated, it's a great way for a dedicated and an exceptional employee to get, be fairly rewarded. And, you know, a school district can have great buildings, we can have all the newest technology, you can have great sports facilities, but it's heart and soul of these classroom teachers. And I truly think this is a way that Wauwatosi can work to retain and attract classroom teachers.
I'm Caroline Curly. I'm a reading specialist at Lincoln Elementary. I guess.
And you were a member of the committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, sorry. I am kind of like that person that has been in Wauwatosi my whole career. I started as a first grade teacher at Roosevelt Elementary for two years, and then I was a third grade teacher for about 12 years at Roosevelt. And throughout that time, I earned my master's degree and my National Board certification. And then I got my reading specialist license. So I've been that teacher who has gone through this process without, without this in place. I can say that throughout that time, I've been on a lot of committees, and this is the one that I've been the most proud to be on, because of the collaborative and professional nature that was throughout the whole process. And I was also on the listening sessions, three out of the four of them. And I was amazed at how the document changed throughout the listening sessions. And a lot of people brought up a lot of similar concerns, but I feel like everyone's insights were brought into the new revised draft.
Thank you. Are there any other board questions? Oh, Mrs. Rios, I saw her first.
Sorry, Mary, don't. Thank you. It was nice to hear from you guys. You know, it's very powerful when you hear it coming straight from the teacher. So thanks for sharing. I know it's a little intimidating to walk up there and talking to Mike, even for me here. Okay, so I have one question that has to do with the committee as well. The criteria, or you kind of touched on that, the evaluation for getting to a Level Three, right? Has that been discussed in the committee? Because it seems like that's the most critical part of this, is how you get to that Three. So how, I think it has, I get that it's a little bit, it can't be totally objective, right? But some.
Well, it's going to be objective based on how you're rated in your.
Evaluation?
In the evaluation, that's a component of it, but we know that's a subjective thing as well. But, I mean, that's going to be, like I said, it's going to be much more objective than it's ever been in the past. So we're going to continue to grow that. That's going to be the basis of how we get there, and we're going to, we're going to meet and discuss and figure out exactly and try to lay it out as clear as we possibly can based on that, as well as other indicators within the leadership realm, and not to be confused with serving on a committee.
Okay.
That's what I think part of the process came down, and everybody started saying, well, if I serve on so many committees, I can get there. That's not what we want.
So, so I guess I, how is that, is the committee going to be part of coming up with that at all? Or is this, I just think that, you know, it seems like it's gone really well. Has that been part of?
Like I said, their work is not done yet.
Okay, so it's.
They may think it is, but hopefully they know that it's not. No, I want to continue working, that's, it's been a really good, and you can hear what they say, that it's been a really good group to work with, and we've made progress.
And, yeah.
So that, that component needs to be finalized, once we get a more solid grounding and understanding of our evaluation system. And that training's going to be ongoing between now and August in full force, so it's going to move rapidly, that development of that criteria.
So that hasn't been discussed yet at the committee?
We discussed it.
You, okay.
I mean, I think we discussed it.
I'm sorry. I feel like I'm, like, missing something.
Part of, here's the issue. We discussed a lot of it, but it's moved, and I think the last change in, when we said, okay, it doesn't have to be leadership, just leadership.
Right, yes.
We were pigeonholing leadership to get there.
And that was great.
And we said exemplary performance. And then we made the change to go away from the DPI model for evaluation and move to the strong model. And I think, I think it was communicated clearly that, you know, we, we need to take the time to learn the model well and make that determination based on, on that model of how people will move into Level Three, and if their performance dips, out of Level Three, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a follow-up for either Mrs. Whitman or Mrs. Curly, or both. How many other, how many of your colleagues were you able to reach outside of the committee and outside of the learning sessions? Did you have any opportunities to create some other conversations?
We're on the same staff, unfortunately. We're just on our staff, like, people definitely talk to me about it.
Okay.
And then at the listening sessions, I met a lot of people I have not met before at the high school level, at the elementary level. And I felt like we were able to communicate what this was about and bring forth some of their questions. Some people felt comfortable speaking to Dr. Erdl and Mr. Chanan. Some people wanted us to take their ideas and speak for them at that.
Before you go any further, we have frequent requests that people go to the microphone, because on the rebroadcast, you sound very clear here to us, but on the broadcast, you may not be so audible. So if, what, whatever we go forward with these comments, everybody please at the microphone for the benefit of those who, if you want to come up and repeat it, that's fine as well, you know? Okay. Yeah, I was getting the signals here to remind me of the microphone, and that's absolutely correct for, okay.
So, well, thank you for that. And Mrs. Whitman, you indicated that you started out feeling doubtful, or not, not real excited about it. And so, again, my, you know, I really want us to get started on the right foot, so that we, because we all know it's going to take time.
But I was doubtful of our very first document.
Right.
I truly felt, by going to those listening sessions, we've come back with a very different document, I think.
Right.
We don't have the step in lane that we're used to in the past. That has changed. But we didn't just want to make another step in lane, I didn't think. We wanted it, you know, to see where your career can be going, and we talked about it being a little ambiguous from one year to the next sometimes, but that's.
How do we get?
Kind of how it is.
All of our employees informed enough and engaged enough, you know, given that you each are in your own classrooms and, you know, that, you know, how do we, how do we get people engaged?
They have to be proactive on their own part and come to listening sessions as well. I mean, we can't pull it out of them. They have to be responsible on their own to come. And I truly thought, I thought the listening sessions went well.
Okay, thanks.
Any more board comment before I throw in my comments? Okay, I have a question. When you say "subjective," do you mean, and I think you do, but just so we're clear, you don't mean arbitrary? You mean following a consistent process in which professional judgments are a component?
That's, that's a very good clarification. Yes, that's exactly what I mean.
You hit the down.
I mentioned "subjective."
Yes.
It's not willy-nilly, because, you know.
Yes, not everything can be.
Whichever way the wind blows, no.
Yes. Yeah, there's some, some things where, hopefully, we have some quantifiable things, but there are some things where the colleagues and supervisors' professional judgment about the performance and the handling of the children, you know, you're saying.
Yeah, and I, the biggest concern is going to be the, it's going to come out as a subjectivity, or the subjective nature of this model. The reality is, we're going to be operating in a much more objective way than we ever have before. Very clearly in my mind, we will be much more objective. Between a consistent evaluation model, consistent administration of that evaluation model, consistent discussions, we're, this is going to lead to discussions between principals and teachers that have not taken place in the past, with all, every single teacher and saying, the discussion is, what do I need to do professionally to move to a level, level where I'm going to be compensated at a higher level? Those conversations don't always take place. Sometimes, we've heard it in the past with the old, old evaluation model, people go 10 years without that kind of professional dialogue, that there was no evaluation model. This is going to force our hands to make sure that we're talking about the things we need to. On the other side of it, we're going to have to look at models for our organization and our structure that's going to support the ability, abilities and time for principals to be able to have that kind of interaction. So some of those management pieces that are, fall in the hands of principals, we're going to have to find ways that, if we deem those not to be as critical as being an instructional leader, how to manage those pieces in different ways, too. So this is ultimately going to lead to a lot of, you know, I just completely went off what your question was.
No, you're on it.
But it's important, it's important to state, because I really do believe it's going to have that, that positive impact on our district.
So, teachers will go through a consistent process, and components of that process will be the professional judgments of their principals. And of course, not wanting to put words in your mouth, but I suspect that those principals will be judged based on the quality of their professional judgments of their teachers.
One of the things, and we've mentioned at the committee level, is if five years down the road, we have a principal that nobody has moved from Level Two to Level Three, or Four to Three, it might not be an issue of the teachers not doing it, it might be an issue of the principal not supporting the teachers enough to be able to move to it. So there's, there is a checks and balances to the system that I, I think will help the whole system.
Okay, all right. Then my last question is, and this is just for clarification for me, to be sure I understand, in case I miss something. If a teacher is at Level Two after a couple of years, and their salary is, let's say, $50,000, and through this consistent process involving professional judgment, they're put to a Level Three in their, in the third year of this process. The first year of Level Three, are they at the bottom of the Level Three scale, or will a teacher ever be placed somewhere else in the Level Three? I'm not talking about when you, when we first implement the model and people get their initial placements. I'm talking about after it's been in process for two or three years, and somebody now is going to get a promotion from Level Two to Level Three. Are you, are you always promoted into the, the bottom of the Level Three scale, or could you be placed higher?
They would be placed higher, that we would want it to be somewhat similar to the increment that's 20 percent of love. What, the natural, the, their gain from going from Level Two to Level Three should be similar to this, as if they were in Level Three and making that movement. So they would move over, and they wouldn't take a hit, they would take a salary increase. While the range looks a little bit different, the intent would be to get a larger salary increase. John, you may want to.
But, but could somebody make a, like, a quantum jump from Level Two to Level Three? I mean, is it, or is it all incremental? There's no, is there leapfrogging?
There is the ability to have leap, if you want to call it leapfrogging, but to advance quicker. There's, there's so many things that play into it, from hiring to retaining, whether it's the performance level of somebody that is really, really performing at an extremely high level and it's clearly documented and noticed. It could be high-needs areas, that somebody's offering a, I don't know, physics teacher, $20,000 more to go, to go to another district on a continual basis, five years in a row, we seem to be, that there's a market. So there's some market-driven forces that we have the ability to adjust to on, on here.
Okay, that was my other question. Okay, thank you. Any other board comment or question? Okay, with that, we will entertain community comment. Is there any community comment on this? Please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. I remind you that this is comment, and in my introductory statement, not a debate with the board and not a Q and A with administration. If anyone has questions for the superintendent, he's offered to speak with anyone here available to the public outside of these meetings, is that correct, Dr. Erdl?
Yes.
Okay, all right. With that, please go ahead.
My name is Brad Rinzel, 1185 Kavanaugh Place. I'm a graduate of Wauwatosi. I'm a parent now in Wauwatosi, and I'm a teacher in Wauwatosi. I am here as a math teacher at East and a member of the Wauwatos Education Association, the WEA. As you know, the WEA is supported by a majority of the teachers in the district, as evidenced by our success at recertifying this past December. As an organization that strives to represent everyone, we put serious effort into learning what the professional educators in our district think. We recently conducted a survey on compensation that was completed by nearly 300 educators. We're asking you to review this information and use it to help make the final decisions on this new salary schedule. We would like to work with you to define the clear path of movement, as was reiterated by you. We'd like to know how to move from your tier, how to move from Level Two to Three, for example, recognizing education experience and objective criteria. Specifically, the question you had even said, what do we have to do to move up? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Razner, and I live at 2007 Wyndham Court in Waukesha. I'm a teacher at Wauwatosi West. And I, first of all, wanted to say thank you to the, to the committee members for taking the time to, you know, I know they spent a lot of time on this as well, as everybody else has. I also really wanted to say thank you to the board members, the listening sessions, because I was also at, at, well, the, the regular ones, but then also the ones that the board had. And I thought that was really, really, really wonderful, again, to hear what everybody had to say. Because, again, like, here, you get little snippets of things here and there, so the more, the more you can hear from other people, I think you get a better picture of what's going on. So at the listening sessions, I know that some of the things that came up were some of the questions that you guys had as well tonight, also the, the clear path. One of the questions was, you know, how do you see yourself moving through the schedule? Well, I myself have been here for forever, so I'm probably, you know, whatever. So there's not going to be a whole, you know, a lot of movement for me, but I still continue to, you know, educate myself, I still continue to move myself, I still continue to improve myself, because that's, because I'm a teacher, I think that's pretty much what a lot of us do. But it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to see, you know, yeah, where am I going to be like next year or the year after? I mean, the, they're so broad in terms of, you know, what each, each section is. And talking through other, to other teachers, I think that's one of the things, if we could, I'm not sure how you're going to refine that, but it's really hard to see if you want to bring new teachers in and retain the teachers. I think it's hard for them to see, where am I going to be in two years, where am I going to be in five years? Because it is less specific. It gives you a big range, and that range is so big, you don't necessarily know where you are. I know you have control over, or we're supposed to have control over where you go, but because it's still subjective, you know, I find that, that, you know, you don't really know. Even if you are going to take on some leadership roles, which I do think that's important, but again, there's only so many of those leadership roles that you're going to be able to, to do as well. So I think you, we've, I think, gotten better with the leadership thing in terms of, that's come full circle, I think I've, I do like the fact that that's changed. But I still think, you know, if we could add more objectivity to each of the things, where you have to do this, 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 and this, and that will get you here. You have to do this, 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 and this, and that will get you here. And I know that we're not going to cover everything, but if there could be a few more things that we could add to make it a little bit more specific, I think that that would help other people see that, okay, if I do this, I can move here, if I can do this, I can move there. Right now, to me, it seems that there needs to be a little bit more of that in place. And then I, like I said, I have talked to a lot of different people, and I'm worried that if it's left just as is, and it has made definite progress since the first time, I do think that the listening sessions helped, and I do think that things have, have changed. But I, one of the things is still that objectivity. I think we need to kind of work and see if we can get some of the subjectivity. I think we need to kind of work and see if we can get some of the subjectivity, more objective, and I think we can do that if we place a few more different things like in the columns, like in order to attain, to go from a two to a three, we can do this, to go from a one to a two, you can do this, like what type of, because the part that's still confusing is, I know that you can get a master's degree or you can get a, end of the National Board certification, but then there's also that and part, you know, different things that qualify for leadership or, you know, being a, you know, somebody that is a good teacher, you know? Maybe if we could do a little more defining of that. And I think in the committee, since they've already done some of that, I think that some of those things can be a little bit more refined, is what I'm kind of looking for. Because, again, some of the people I've talked with, they're, just because it's so loosey-goosey, I'm afraid we are going to lose teachers and I do not want that to happen. Like I said, I've been here since the mid-'80s, I love Wauwatosi, I want to continue to grow, but I really think that we need to have, you know, if we can take out, the more subjectivity we can take out, the better. I realize that education is subjective in some cases, so there's got to be some, you know, some subjectivity in there, but I'm sure that even with, like, you know, with the W E A or whatever, we would love to, you know, work through that and see if we can come up with, you know, some help with that, you know? There's a lot of teachers that want to be involved in that too, so I think that the more minds we put, the better product we'll get. So, thank you.
Thank you. It would be wonderful if elements of servant leadership could be included in the assessment of leadership. And we know there's some, one great book in particular, which I can't recall the author at this time, but there's a lot of leadership involved in being part of the team. So, yes?
Could I ask Dr. Erdl a question regarding that comment?
Yes, yes, please.
I keep thinking, we have a lot of these answers in this evaluation, but I haven't seen it, I don't know how many of our teachers have seen it, this model? The CISA six model that we, it was pretty recently that we decided we're adopting that, right?
Correct.
So, do people know what's in there? Okay, and how do we, I mean, it's out there, right? I mean, there is more specificity available.
Sure, there's plenty of information out online, you could read through the Strong Model of Evaluation, S T R O N G E. But we want to do it as a district and we're going to, like I said, we're meeting tomorrow afternoon to put that timeline together, to lay out the implementation and how we're going to get more people involved and trained and moving that forward. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a rapid timeline. I think we have a good base in the pilot from the previous DPI model. It's different, it changes the, you know, verbiage a little bit, it's still good teaching, so I think we know what it's based on.
But I mean, you know, the leadership, whatever, I mean, I do agree, that has to be a little more defined.
Yes.
And if there's already something out there, can we get that information to people? You know, I know, like you said, I guess I can go online and get it, but it'd be good to have in front of us along with the proposal too, so if you can, you know, give us a link or whatever.
We're expediting it as quickly as reasonable with, I mean, our first training was Thursday and Friday, that's as soon as we could have them in to work with us, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for your patience with this.
No problem. My name is Patty Chapman, I live at 6563 North Crestwood Drive. I teach at Longfellow Middle School. I wanted to address the issue about the leadership. I do have some concerns about it and I know other teachers do. We already work longer hours than just what you think, the school day, bring home papers to correct constantly, and I'm worried that we're going to be expected to, we're going to be asked to do more than what we do beyond and above what we already do. I think back to two years ago, my, not two years ago, my second year at Longfellow, which was 14 years ago, my sister passed away from cancer and two years after that, my brother-in-law died and I took in two teenage boys along with my four kids. At that time, if I was asked to do a leadership activity at school, I had enough to keep my sanity. And I know that a lot of teachers in the school have younger children, maybe have kids with special needs or taking care of their parents. And I'm concerned that we don't have the time for activities after school. And I wanted the leadership part to be defined also because it's kind of scares me because, and I do have, my boys are a lot older now and the problems do get bigger, so, well, I have time to do things after school. So I'm just concerned that, I know most of the leadership, from what I understand, is, can be done at school and through just working with our colleagues. But my concern would be if it went beyond that, because we already go beyond, and I know there are other teachers in the area, in the district, that would be concerned with the leadership after school. I know people don't have problems being leaders in the school, but when it goes into the workday, we all have families, I mean, beyond the workday, we all have families and obligations. So I appreciate if that's looked at closer and we know what the leadership is. I also want to make one more comment on the salary ranges in the packet that we got. It said that these are not real numbers, that it's not the true numbers that they're working with. And I'm wondering when those numbers are going to be real numbers, true numbers that we know what is actually in each range. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Young, I'm at 6728 Maple Terrace. And my son attends Jefferson, he's in first grade, my daughter will start J K there next fall. But I'm not here to speak solely from the perspective of a parent. As residents and taxpayers, my husband and I have a vested interest in the success of TOSA schools. I attended a previous board meeting to learn more about the proposed compensation package being considered. As educators now have more flexibility to change districts, I assume that TOSA is doing its best to recruit and retain experienced educators. So to get a sense of how TOSA compares with other districts, I did a little research. A quick Google search led to the DPI website and the 2013 report on average teacher salaries in districts across the state. Included in this report are average years of educator experience by district. The information I found there led to a disappointing conclusion. TOSA does not compare well to area districts either in salary or the ability to retain experienced teachers. For example, the average TOSA educator has 10 and three-quarters years of experience. In Elm Brook and Franklin, it's 15 years, while Menominee Falls, it's 16. The average salary in TOSA is just over $53,000. In the other three districts, the pay is on average about $10,000 more. So out of curiosity, I looked up where TOSA was 10 years ago. At this time, the average years of experience was over 14 years, on par with comparable districts. The average pay of TOSA was lower, but the difference between it and other districts was much less. So in short, the average TOSA educator now has five years less experience than their peers in comparable area districts. I don't see how the proposed compensation package will address this problem. As the marketplace for educators is now competitive, a reworked compensation package can be a great opportunity to attract and retain quality educators. However, what's being proposed leans towards subjective evaluations, unclear definitions of leadership, changing expectations, and open negotiations at all levels and competencies. The package should be clear in setting expectations and salaries for teachers as a work and plan for their careers. Experienced teachers are an investment. Teachers form the most immediate and lasting perception of the quality of a child's education and a district's performance. What happens in the classroom is truly where the rubber meets the road. I prefer that my children be taught by experienced educators and I want to know that the TOSA school district is doing all it can to ensure that this happens. My husband and I could have moved anywhere in the Waukees metro area. One really important reason that we're here is the quality of our public schools. We've made an investment in this community, not just financially, but in time and involvement. Part of your job is to protect the investment that we and others like us have made in TOSA by ensuring the continued quality of our public schools. A strong public school system equals higher property values. Central to maintaining quality schools is staffing classrooms with talented teachers and providing them with an incentive to stay. I want TOSA to compensate its educators well. I don't want TOSA to be a district where teachers gain experience and then move on. It doesn't reflect or respect the investment that's been made by those that have chosen to live here. I appreciate the work that went into this proposal. I really want it to succeed. But in my opinion, it does not appear to address the stated goal of retaining or recruiting educators. I support paying teachers in Wauwatosi in a way that makes our classrooms a destination for the experienced and effective educator. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional community comment?
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Hancher, I teach at Jefferson Elementary School. I've been there since 1987. My concerns that I want to bring up is, over the last several years, the district has made an investment in collaboration in the elementary school, middle school, and high school, both teachers working together as one unit to help children. Bottom line is to help children. And with this type of compensation model, I have a concern that, how are you going to make sure that you're not pitting one teacher against another? For instance, for example, I teach fifth grade with my partner. We switch for math, we switch for reading, we switch for social studies and science. How do you, and if the evaluation system is based on numbers, based on tests, well, how do you know which teacher is the one that provided the inspiration or the help to get them there? I teach social studies. I don't just teach social studies, but I also teach reading along with that to help them to understand. Well, let's say my partner has increased reading test scores and mine are maybe mediocre. Well, who's to say that my help didn't help her kids get better? So it gets very, very subjective on how you're going to handle when you have partners working together to help children and all of a sudden, one partner's going to get a bigger salary increase because the principal thinks they're a better educator. What do you think's going to happen to the other teacher who's working just as hard, collaborating every Wednesday evening, giving out ideas? What do you think the relationship is going to be between those educators? When they find out that your partner, my partner gets a better, a higher increase in salary because they deem them more valuable? Do you not think that that's going to pit one group of teachers against another? Another example, we talk about market-driven pay. Dr. Erdl talked about, well, if physics teachers can demand $20,000 more, why not pay that person, right? Okay, here's the problem with that. Then the elementary teacher is going to get shafted. Because as we know, that elementary teacher is not going to be able to demand that kind of salary. So what's going to happen is the high school teacher, because there's less of them, are going to get higher and higher salaries. And then how are you going to ensure that elementary, who are just as good teachers as the high school, are getting compensated along with those high schools? High school teachers? How are you going to ensure that? And how are you going to make sure that you're not going to have teacher pit against teacher once those salary increases come out? And once those salaries, people find out? Now, we worked on a system where everybody got the same salary increase. We didn't have conflicts with, oh, he's getting more, or so on. But with this one, you better be awfully careful, because I can see down the road, I can see teachers pointing against other teachers, why is that person getting more than me? I'm working, my skills are just as well as that person. So when we talk about subjectivity, we better be darn sure that the teachers are being evaluated effectively, because I can tell you right now, in my building, we're concerned that high school teachers are going to be getting much more salary increases based on what Dr. Erdl has suggested, market-driven forces. Well, I'm sorry, I think a first-grade teacher is just as valuable as a physics teacher. How are you going to ensure that doesn't happen? So, I thank the committee for putting this out, but I'm coming and looking at it from an elementary point of view, but we're really working together collaboratively all the time. And so it's more, it's a different feel in the elementary than it is in the high school, because we work together, we share kids constantly. We're working together constantly. Not to say that high school and middle school don't, but it's a whole different story. And I feel like there's been a lot of talk about the upper grades, but the teachers in the lower grades. How are you going to ensure that they're going to feel just as valuable as the teachers that are in the high school, considering the example that Dr. Erdl gave about the physics teacher demanding a higher salary because they're physics? What about the fifth-grade teacher? What about the reading teacher? Are they going to be able to demand that too? Because as we've found in the past, the way teachers have been hired has varied. And the way people have been compensated has varied too. Some get salary adjustments, other teachers didn't. Some people were left for higher paying salaries, others were said, "We'll pay you more if you stay." So how can we ensure this evaluates, this compensation model is not going to have winners and losers? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any additional comment from the community? Thank you. Is there any additional comment from the board?
Yeah.
Mrs. Randall?
Question, test scores and market-driven hiring, are those identified in our plan?
No. Test scores are, the evaluation system, there's a component of the evaluation that involves student performance, but it's more about, SLOs are student learning objectives, it's not, the teachers aren't going to be categorized against one another with test scores from their kids.
Okay, so test scores are not going to be a measure?
There's going to be a component of 15, what is it, 15% of, very limited.
At the new teacher evaluation model, I think some of the clarification will come through that, but one of the things about the model that we switched to is that data is used more for a teacher to present as part of their evaluation and reflection. It's not that the district collects data on a teacher and then makes determinations based on that.
Okay.
So it's driven more collaboratively in the evaluation process rather than some external force collecting data.
So in the example that Mr. Hancher gave, and this has been the argument against, you know, using test scores, is you don't, you know, if a fourth grader's achieving, is it the fourth grader's, the fourth grade teacher who's making that happen, or is it the first grader, or the second, or the third? So you don't see that being able to happen with this?
The goals that, and I'm not, I don't want to pretend to be the expert on the new model, because we just learned about those components last week, but from what I see from that is that the teachers write SMART goals, that, you know, which could have data in them, but those SMART goals, they could present evidence as pieces of their evidence might be something about their data and reflection, but it definitely does not have a component where we're tracking a teacher's data over time and saying, oh, whether they're effective or not based on that tracking of data.
Okay, thanks. So I do want to talk about that a little bit. The current system doesn't work for a couple of reasons. And Mr. Hancher, I understand what you're saying about the collaboration, but here's the other piece of that. What if, what if you're an outstanding teacher and your fifth-grade partner had the same number of years in educational experience, but didn't work as hard? And they were making the same on the salary schedule? Is that any different? I mean, we're trying to get-
We don't want to turn this into a debate.
No, it's not a debate.
So, well, here, Mrs. Randall's comments, but then that'll, this is the last round for board comment only.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So this is what I would ask people to think about then?
No, no.
No, apparently not.
By procedure, we don't want to make this into a debate or a back and forth, so-
So, yeah.
Mrs. Randall sort of overstepped a little bit by asking a question of someone, so we're not going to go there. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Randall.
So this is what I would ask people to think about. Nothing is perfect, but will this be better? Will this be better for our- Will this be better for our kids? Will this be better for you, our employees? Will this be better for our community? Why or why not? And, you know, again, I do, I am really looking for more detail, and I'm hoping that we'll get it quickly, but I'm excited about these opportunities. The people that I know who are educators, you know, they want to be the best, and most of them are, but they're not recognized that way now. And so, you know, it's worrisome that, you know, the responsibility for this is, you know, building principles. They have a huge responsibility in this, but if we can define, define, define the criteria so that everybody gets it and can ask questions about it and so on, I just think it's a great, great opportunity. And so I hope that everybody will keep thinking about it and keep asking questions and talk to your peers, get as much information as you can, talk to Mr. Mec, Dr. Erdl, anybody that you feel can inform you. And one, just other quick thing, Mrs. Chapman, thank you for your reminder about humanity, the humanity of our, of our teachers and our families. That's always a good reminder. Thank you.
Is there any other board comment? Mrs. Muftal?
What are the next steps? Are we going to see this in a couple of weeks as a final?
Yes. And we'll ask the board to approve the components of it that are, that need to be approved so we can continue moving forward. There's obviously some work to be done. And we're going to continue with that work through the evaluation model to define. And I need to put this out there. If somebody's looking for a clear-cut definition of what it is, to be in a certain position on any compensation model in education, it's not going to happen. We're going to make it more clear and clarify it, but there is always going to be a component that, you know, if somebody could define great teaching and put it in a form and say, this is exactly what it is, and here's what it looks like in every single individual subject and person, and so on, it would be done, and everybody would be doing it. So it's really looking at developing consistency with our principles, understanding the evaluation model. But, so that, that's the key component right now, really pushing to get the evaluation model understood by everybody that it needs to. Approval by the board, and then those conversations for initial placement, and then moving the process forward so people know before the start of next school year what it is they need to do and how they need to get to move on, on the system.
Let me just clarify then. Is our next meeting more information on the proposal?
No, I would be asking the board to approve it.
Okay. I would like to hear more about how the plan works to retain. And I heard some of that this evening, but I would, I would like more information, and I would like more information on in the community about how this plan helps to retain.
Say something about that?
Well, no, we're not, well, he's part of your committee. If you wish to bring someone to the microphone as part of your committee, Dr. Erdl, you may.
Yes, thank you. So I'm at, I'm not at the top of the pay scale. I'm like one notch down. I'm still seven or eight years from what would be early retirement. So when I look at where I'm going on this present pay scale, I'm going nowhere. On the new pay scale, there's, there's a lot of room for me to grow there before I retire. I see it as a great thing for me. So it couldn't be any better, actually.
I will ask that as part of your presentation prior to our vote at the next meeting, that you enumerate or list the values of leadership that you want the teaching organization to embrace. I am not asking that you fill in the details on the exact specifics that people must do to satisfy the professional judgments with regards to leadership, but I would like to see whether there are things, for example, leadership can be many things during the day. If you're in the room, are you part of the solution? Do, you know, there's all kinds of ways to lead without chairing a committee in the evening. You know, embracing the mission, selflessly embracing the mission in the name of the children. There's a lot of leadership in setting a good example for people. For example, just things I would throw out is the kind of thing I'd be looking for, that some of these concerns can be addressed, because I think there are elements of servant leadership that we do need to value as part of this approach. So, just my opinion as one board member. With that...
Can I have a question for Dr.?
Yes.
Will we be getting a presentation prior to the vote on the evaluation system?
Sounds like you will be getting one.
Okay. Yeah, because to me, it's all one. It's part of it.
According to my board president.
Yes. A short presentation to answer questions that have been raised this evening, which is why I said...
Yeah, how it fits into this.
An enumeration of values, rather, a presentation of a detailed plan with regards to leadership assessment, for my question, anyway.
And I'll study up on it before.
All right. Well, thank you very much. It was a good presentation, and we look forward to the next meeting. And with that, we will move to our next report from Student Services and Amendments to Policy 5512 on Use of Tobacco by Students.
Guess not everybody came to listen to our policy change tonight, but I thank you for your attention.
We're here for you.
Thanks. I'm just bringing to you our previous policy, 5512, was listed as the use of tobacco by students. I'm recommending to this school board that we make a revision to that policy to include the word "smoking" in use of tobacco products by students. In the language, I've also added that this is, includes electronic cigarettes. So it's just trying to stay current with the times and what students are into, what they're interested in. We haven't had a problem. I'm hoping that we can prevent that before it becomes a problem. I know that there has been some incidents of confiscation of electronic cigarettes, but before it becomes a problem, my recommendation is that we add the explicit language to our policy.
Any board comment? Questions? I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Yes, and I commend you on your foresight in getting this to us quickly. So is there any community comment? Well, thank you very much for a very succinct presentation. All right. Next, we'll move to Mrs. Muftal's report on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' Convention Resolutions.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the board for allowing me to serve on your behalf. There were 320 state school district delegates present at the delegate assembly out of 426 districts in Wisconsin. It was a lively debate. I do have some copies of the final resolutions that I'll pass, and there are a few additional copies for the community. Yes, Ms. Galante has. Yeah, she has one. The, again, it was a lively debate, and I had, just to be clear, I had only attended the, just the delegate assembly portion, and that involves, you know, really two, one evening and one afternoon. And we don't, the district does not actually pay for me to attend that portion. That's something that we have included in our WASB membership. So I attended the pre-delegate assembly the evening before, which would have been Tuesday evening. That was very interesting, because it led to an emergency resolution discussion that was actually proposed on the floor of the delegate assembly the following afternoon. So it was a little bit more eventful than the usual delegate assembly, and, and it was good to hear the, the comments at that pre-delegate assembly. So going into, and I know that I had asked Ms. Galante, and I know she did, forward to you the preliminary resolution report, the document that I've just distributed is the final resolutions that were passed by the delegate assembly. So pretty much taking the board's direction then, I did vote in, in every capacity with one exception, and that was, there was a lot of discussion on Resolution 1413. That was safety belts on school buses. And there were many, there were several attempted amendments to this that I knew our board did not have an opportunity to discuss. We, you know, as a district, we don't have general busing. However, we do bus several children, special needs children, and we do have buses that take our children to and from events. However, the board, you know, I felt did not have adequate preparation for those amendments, and the ultimate decision was that that resolution failed in the delegate assembly by a huge margin. It failed by 72 yes to 243 no. So, so I voted no. And I hope you were all okay with that, so. But, but there was a lot, again, a lot of good discussion. I don't know if there's anybody that, you know, had one resolution that they wanted me to comment on more than another. They used the electronic keypad system for all of the assembly, which was really nice, because then you could actually see the actual vote counts of the people that, you know, were on the floor. And there was, again, a lot of discussion. There was another resolution that had, just to update you, there was another resolution that had a lot of discussion that I know would be something that we would be interested in, and that was Resolution 1415, Weapons Possession in School Zones. And part of the discussion was there that only a sworn law enforcement officer would be able to bring weapons or be allowed to use weapons. And some people wanted to make an amendment that it would be an off-duty person, or, and that just did not go over very well with the delegate assembly, and I'm certain would not go over well in Wauwautosa. But the, then the original, the amendments then, they failed, and the original motion then was passed, so. Those are kind of the highlights. And going on to the emergency resolution, this was a little bit timely, because there was some legislation being proposed, and, and it was based on Assembly Bill 609 that would mandate that every school district operating kindergarten to fifth grade ensure that the pupils in those grades participate in physical education for at least 30 minutes each day on which school is held. And the emergency resolution then that was proposed was the WASB opposes legislative efforts to mandate the particular amount of instructional time in each school day that must be allocated to a particular, particular subject areas. And that motion has to be approved on the floor by, by a supermajority, and they were able to bring it to the floor, and it was voted on, and it was passed as such. So that's pretty much a nutshell of what happened.
Well, Mrs. Muftal, I'd like to thank you for exercising your good judgment and keeping your voting in alignment with the intent of the board. I know you had to think on your feet there a little bit, and thank you for that. Is there any other board comment with regards to Mrs. Muftal's report? Is there any community comment?
I just want to repeat my request. Sharon wasn't here, but that we get a presentation on the impact that these resolutions have on legislation, you know, if somebody from WASB could come, and that we take a look at our bylaws for our legislative committee and maybe get that going again. Mrs. Muftal might be a good person to lead that, because most of these have legislation attached. So something for the president to think about.
Well, it fits the board's wish.
A good and willing person? Okay, all right. Well, in your capacity as delegate, please take those action items forward. Yes, Mr. Dr. Erdl?
If I can just comment on Sharon's report. It's not actually her report, but it's actually the school board convention, because it's somewhat timely and fits in with what we were discussing earlier. I did go to two different sessions. One was South Milwaukee, did a presentation on their compensation plan. The other one was Northland Pines, which is Eagle River, did a presentation on their compensation plan. I would categorize those two not, both of, I wouldn't say they're both reform models, but I think it's interesting to look at Northland Pines, who has been doing it now for a year and a half, in a model where specific teachers, they get, they get a point system assigned to them, and if you don't reach a certain level, they start going backward in salaries. So there's a number of staff members in their district that have made the decision to leave, or they were actually, I think it's $20,000 over the next five years. They cap the amount of money, you go backwards in a year, but a number of people are moving backward. But on the other side of it, a number of people that are considered highly effective or exceptional are moving forward at that same amount. So just thought I would just comment on some of the school board convention activities and presentations that were there.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, Mrs. Muftal.
Just to conclude, and Mrs. Randall's question, I think, is a good one. I, I think it would be a great idea to have one or two of the WASB reps to be here, because the parliamentarians and, you know, the actual, you know, legislators for us on the floor, really WASB is our only, our only chance, really, as a number of school districts in the state, to have any kind of effect on the legislation that's currently being voted on. You know, really, they're the only, and so really, we're, our, you know, lots of our registrations basically are going to, to them, you know, legislating on our, you know, on our behalf, on, on the behalf of all the school districts in the state. And we have seen that coming down to the district level multiple times as, you know, certain bills are being proposed. So, so having more activity can actually have a good effect on the district. And, and I think it would be great to have, you know, I don't know if the executive director would be available, or actually, you know, one of the lobbyists to come and, you know, really talk to us to see how they, how they do this, and, and that our membership dollars are, are working for us and a good investment.
Well, thank you. Right, is there any community comment? Seeing none, at this time, we'll move to the, try to move to the next portion of our agenda. We would like to adjourn to move into a working in-service session. So may I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene in Conference Room A for a board in-service? As this in-service is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained. May I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Mrs. Randall, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muftal?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Reals?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, we are adjourned into in-service. Please let's convene in about five minutes in Room A.